Welcome to the Berlin Select Board Meeting of December 4th. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. The first thing on our agenda this morning, this evening, I'm unaware where I am, is executive session. So, we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body if the chair so declares. Highland Bridge, and we will, we're only going to adjourn, correct?
Yeah, and then I thought we would reopen, take a recess. We don't have to adjourn, we could recess, or we could close this one out. I thought because Conservation Commission members would leave, it might be easier to have them as two separate meetings.
Yes, so I just didn't know whether to read this last question.
Yes, I will.
And to only come out for the purposes of adjournment. So that was my motion.
I will second that motion on the Select Board side. We could finish our parts first and then go into the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Sure.
We have to do roll call votes, correct?
Yes.
So Hawkins, aye?
Keefe, aye.
Okay, so now do I have to read that same thing?
You do.
Thank you.
Just the paragraph there and then.
Yeah, so I have to open our meeting too, correct?
Right.
So, welcome to a joint meeting of the Conservation Commission with the Berlin Select Board, as Chris stated, subject to being recorded. I will accept a motion for the Conservation Commission to go into executive session under Section 3 to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation, litigating position of the public body if the chair so declares. Highland Bridge, and to only come out for the purposes of adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now in executive session.
We're going to open the Select Board Meeting of December 4th. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. The first thing on our agenda is approval of minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes from November 20th. That's 30 minutes, correct?
Okay, can I just ask a quick question?
Go for it.
The, I think it was the first sentence under, the last, the last big paragraph in the minutes, it says something about school fees assessed to committees. What, can, can somebody refresh my memory? What was that about?
School fees assessed to committees? The recreation conversation that we had about the gym?
That's kind of what I thought it was, but to committees?
Right, because it's Recreation Committee, and so whether or not the school board should charge their fees to town committees like recreation, like they charge outside agencies.
Alright, thank you. Ralsetti. Okay, then.
I've made the motion.
And I will second it. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And general public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to our general department update, which is highway.
Good evening.
Hi Fred.
Good evening.
How are you?
So I'll just like point through real quick. So we just finally getting caught up with a bunch of stuff that has been going on. We started our roadside mowing again. We did get, one more guy got licensed for it. One other kid is going, I believe in a couple of weeks to try for his. So hopefully we can get more guys out on the road. The fall cleanup started. The drainage issue that I talked about was up here on Linden Street. First house on the right coming down the hill from Pear Beat. They had a water problem. So years ago, back when Denny was here, we did a hand burn up there, and it worked forever. When we did an overlay up there when Keith was here, it took half the burn with up. So the water was just escaped right over the top because we don't get regular rain anymore. We get like monsoon rain.
Right.
So it was washing all behind it, and it was actually going into the house down below as well. So we were able to finally get a burn installed there even though it would be on the rain season. So the burn got put up, we got it backfilled. The homeowners up there know that we'll be back in the spring to spread lumen and seed it, and that'll, that'll finish that. We got some road edges filled again. So we did hire Ken from the last meeting. Ken came on board, has been an absolute godsend, real good asset. He's been getting a lot of stuff done, he got the new office painted, so we can get ready for the move, right? Which is happening soon.
He is just like, okay?
Yeah. So he's finally getting to all the stuff that like has just been adding up and adding up. So it's really good to have. I attended the Worcester County Highway Association meeting, which was held here in town. I was more or less guilted into it because they have them all set along, but they're all over the state. And I just, I wasn't going to travel to like the western part. So it was hosted at Berlin Country Club, so I kind of got first in going. But it was actually really good because they talked about the upcoming winter, but they had four or five different speakers. So they, they went over what to expect for the coming winter, which is different from everything else you hear. I'm still not convinced. One good part was that Department of Labor Standards came in and gave a safety and health program for Public Works. And at some point, we are going to have them come into our building to do a consultation. They'll come in and they'll point out things you're doing right, things you're doing wrong, any safety issues. It's the time to have it done because if they find something wrong, they don't fine you for it, they don't gig you for it. But you will be required to fix it unless it's like an immediate safety thing, and then it's got to be done right then and there. So I think I'm going to have one of them come in, seeing as we're, I believe, still relatively new. At least we can see what they're looking for. And they went over a little bit of work zone safety. It's a, it's a class that Jim and I had gone through, and once more comes available, I'm going to have the other guys go through it, because things have changed over the years. So I think it'll be a good thing to do. And at some point, I'm going to start putting like, like our work zones together, like designing our work zone if we're out like doing a basin, or if we're doing trees, you know, each one will have its own thing because they have short term, and then obviously long term where you're actually sinking in. Works on sites. So as I get time, we'll get those put together. And I did start putting together a spreadsheet of all our training stuff, because even though we have it, like if someone were to come in from OSHA or whatever, it'd be like, you know, where's the training record on him? And it's like, here somewhere. So at least, you know, we can try to get some of that done. The permanent bridge signs came in, so we got those put in. Adam had actually fabricated some barricades so we could take some of the stuff back that we used throughout the year. So we have permanent ones set down there for now. They do come apart so we can repurpose them elsewhere as we need them. The facility studies were done. I'm kind of looking forward to what's coming back with them, and yet I'm kind of nervous as to what's coming back with them, just talking with them.
I'm with you. It's like a mixed bag reaction.
Yeah, you know, a lot of things from what I, what he told me was they reached their expected life cycle. They're still working, but a lot of stuff seems to be replaced by time. So I don't know how that's going to work. The only other thing we had with the buildings was we had a heat issue where this building ran out of oil, and the 1870 ran out of oil, but that furnace still fired. We didn't have to do anything with it. And it was hard because we didn't have any emergency contact numbers for the new oil company, Friday selling. Kristen was able to give me the number to the owner. And then at some point, I stumbled upon a number to an emergency answering service. But that was a thing all by itself because the woman was trying to tell me that deliveries, emergency deliveries are cash on delivery, and I'm like, well, that's not going to happen. It's just not going to happen. So that started around 10:00 in the morning, the boilers got refired like a quarter after four. And the building had actually cooled down, the police department and got cold. Up here, most of the offices were just over 60 degrees. So we were able to adjust the dampers, so it warmed up in time for anyone to show up Monday morning. And I did adjust the delivery schedule. I said for three weeks, Northboro Oil was doing the 1870 weekly, because they have one tank and it's a large building. So they were doing that weekly, and this place here, we changed to every week and a half to see how that goes. If we find it's getting too close, then we'll shorten it down. So hopefully we don't have to worry about that again. The usual stuff with the transfer station, we haven't done much down there. We helped fire department just at the end of the month, they hang the lights up town. And we had just two events for snow. One of them was just the threat of ice overnight. Luckily, it didn't come. I came out of town early and nothing came, so it was good. But that last little bug we had, we ended up getting around two inches of snow. It started around 10 o'clock, really started coming down. It was supposed to start raining at 1:00. It didn't start raining at 1:00. It just continued to snow. So we ended up, we started treating the roads around 11:00. And before the guys got halfway through their rounds, I checked the weather again and realized it wasn't going to change. So we came back and had to put plows on. We weren't expecting having to go out, so we were putting two plow frames on the six mill dump trucks at 12:30. So we kind of like got caught there. That was supposed to be the week after the drop. But the roads got scraped that morning, there were no, were no issues. Buses got through early. That's, that's pretty much the sum of our month.
Okay. Through the chair, if I may?
Yes.
Quick question Fred, on the RTU, the shutdown, they have to shut it down two weeks before?
Nope, so they're actually going to be shutting it down this Friday, the 8th.
Okay.
And then the changeover is going to be Monday, the 11th.
Okay.
Yeah, so I don't know what time of day on Friday, the building's going to lose heat.
Right.
The main office building's going to lose heat.
Oh, I misread that. Got it, okay.
And then they're going to have the crane and the, the delivery truck out back. I'm assuming it's going to be out back from what he was talking about. And the install should take one day. So they're hoping, they're going to have all their site contractors here, they're going to have people from Train, the ATC Company for all the changeover and the computer updates. So hopefully, once they start, they're going to pick it, put the new one in, and hopefully add heat back one day.
It says, I think we asked this question before, the cameras were on, RTU is rooftop unit?
Correct.
And so this is the roof handler for this. And so we have a Select Board meeting that night.
Yes, we do.
And so we should at least think about what our alternates are, or what happens if something goes wrong, because meeting notices and stuff. And it's, it's our long meeting night.
Correct, and if for some reason it is absolutely freezing cold in this building, I will have to send folks home because I'm not going to make people freeze.
Right.
So I will have to figure out what to do.
That might be fine for, are we like, could we get, you know, space heaters in this room so we can continue and wear jackets or something? Because I hate to push everything on the 11th out.
Yeah, I know, that's supposed to be a big meeting.
It can't get that cold, though, I mean.
Well, the weekend lows is supposed to be in the 30s.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We won't panic just yet.
Right.
I do have a couple of space heaters.
I don't think panic, just be ready for something, like, you know, updates during the day.
Yep, absolutely.
So that we know whether or not it's going to be, we think where things are going to happen.
Well, Fred and I'll be in touch, and then I have a space heater, Dee has a space heater. We can close it off and warm it up in here.
Yep.
We can pack with lots of people, though.
Yeah, that's okay, lots of people will show up, our own breathing. Well, we'll see what we can push, the electrical use in the building for one room.
Right.
Yeah.
No, we'll figure it out.
Your new building person, it, an idea, not a command, if I can start to imagine it, but you know, if he's in buildings on a regular basis to just check the oil levels.
Yeah.
Because since he's going to be there now, it'd save you from having to come in off the field to do that every now and then.
Yeah.
And then where are we at with the, I'm sure I've seen it up to that, but the weatherization at, at the Town Barn?
I actually just reached out to all the people involved. It was today's Monday, it was either Friday or Saturday, asking, because like it got to crickets.
Right.
You know, the wrong pots were ordered, these pots were. So I asked both guys back in the email, can you just communicate together? Because you're supplying the parts, you're putting the project in. And it was nothing, it was, it was quiet. So I requested a Zoom.
Right.
With all the bar deals, so we can all just hash it out. Well, I didn't get no responses from yes or no's, but I did get a whole list of stuff that we need.
Right.
And that whether or not we're going to buy it, or if Coldplay is going to, you know, submit it, and I was like, oh my God. But I did the read receipts, so I know people have read them, or they've opened them. So they have no excuse why they shouldn't be responding to me.
So I don't know what the next steps for us at these, because this has been, feels like years.
Yeah.
Yeah, we need to get together. I think that your solution of having a Zoom is a great idea.
Right.
If you'd like, I can ask, we can set one up.
Maybe if it's facilitated by.
Yeah, just send it out, be like, we're having a meeting on this day.
Yep, right. Yep, we can definitely.
Have the Town Board send it out. It costs us money, I know.
Yeah, no, no, we'll, we'll get a, we'll get a meeting going.
Okay.
Oh, so one thing I forgot to add to public buildings, because it's ours, the solar stuff down the highway garage.
Yeah.
Is really cranking along. They got all the grid work up. The electricians have been there for about a week now, but they're doing half days.
Right.
So a lot of wiring is done. The gentleman that is running it was hoping to get all the panels on the roof, the glass panels, on by the end of the month. So that way, when winter hits, they're not putting guys on the roof. And then it's just a matter of the electricians tying things in on the ground. So that's definitely moving along pretty quick.
Good, good. Too bad Peg's not here to hear that.
I know.
She was heading that up.
Yep.
Practically, yeah. Alright.
This is, this is climate change talking, like they're hoping by the end of December before they, before winter hits.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought winter hit in December, but.
No.
At least I remember as a kid, winter hitting in December, but.
No, hopefully it'll be the end of January, start of February.
Right.
Some big storms.
Any other questions, Scott?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Alright, and we had a, had, I guess, a public hearing tonight for.
I actually think you still have to call it to order, and then we have to do a motion to continue.
Yes.
Right.
Do you want me to read this, Kristen?
Sure.
Okay. At least the first paragraph.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. River Bridge Liquors Incorporated, Doing Business As Berlin Liquors, 3 Bassett Road, Berlin, Massachusetts, 01503, has applied to the Berlin Select Board to transfer the all, all alcohol packaged store liquor license of Berlin Liquors LLC, Doing Business As Berlin Liquors, Matthew Senney, manager, to River Bridge Liquors Incorporated, Doing Business As Berlin Liquors, 3 Bassett Road, Berlin, Mass., Neil Patel, manager. This license is exercised at 3 Bassett Road in Berlin, Mass. on the following described premises, the storefront space with the River Bridge mixed-use development consisting of 1,634 square feet of retail space on one floor with two entrances and four exits. And we are here tonight to do, or were here tonight to do a public hearing. However, I'm told that we have to continue the hearing.
Yes.
To December 11th?
Yes.
At 7:45?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Pending, pending information that's still waiting to be received.
Correct.
Okay.
So they have not submitted all the required paperwork to actually have this hearing yet?
That is correct. So liquor license hearings have to be advertised out in advance. So typically what we do is when we receive the application, we, or when we receive the notification, we allow them to advertise it while they're completing the preparation of the application, because there's a time lag, usually about three weeks there. So by opening it tonight, we're allowing them to complete that application and not have to re-advertise the hearing.
Okay.
Okay.
I would make a motion to continue this hearing until 7:45 PM on Monday, December 11th.
Okay, thank you, and I will second it. And hearing nothing else, we'll take a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we're down to our Town Administrator Report.
Okay, this is a bit of a short one this week. It has been, I hope everyone had a wonderful Thanksgiving. It was a time to spend with some family that I greatly enjoy doing. Hopefully y'all did as well. The FY25 budget packages were due on November 30th. They are now under review by the Town Accountant, who is starting to submit them to my office. And once they're deemed complete, I will then be taking them all and compiling them into a draft preliminary budget to begin reviewing with the FinCom in January. Good news with CSX. The chiefs and I had a very productive meeting with the regional directors for CSX regarding our concerns about notification of incidents and who to contact when there's a problem or cleanup matter. We now have, believe it or not, they work on, they're huge, so they work with a call center in Florida that is 24/7/365 that incidents need to be called into. The problem is sometimes the operators may not call before the resident sees something and puts it on Facebook. So we were hoping to get ahead of that and not be notified by residents that, oh, there was a train derailment down on X road. Unfortunately, that is going to sometimes happen, but now we have this number where if a resident notifies us, or we, you know, come across it, we, we find out about it, we're able to call and get a dispatch information, an estimated time, and, and basically continue to get contact information throughout the process of what's going to happen with the cleanup, the nature of the materials, et cetera. We have had three train derailments in Berlin in the last 12 months, which actually the regional directors were not aware that that number was that high. So they were appreciative of the fact that we had reached out to them, you know, because we put that on their radar. They also let us know they are doing work in the area, and we now have contacts when we have questions regarding that work. So I think we've established some good relationships there, and many thanks to Lori Trahan's office for helping us establish that connection. I have good news also on OPEB. We have received the study back from Odyssey Advisors, and they will be presenting, that's another reason why the 11th is such a busy night. They will be giving a presentation on retiree health insurance costs to the Insurance Advisory Committee this week, and to the Select Board on December 11th. We also have a flooring replacement project out to bid at the municipal offices that was funded through the FY24 Capital Plan. Quotes for this project are due December 13th. It's a request for responses because it's under $50,000, so it's not a full bid. Project's estimated to cost $28,000 and includes carpet and tile replacement over on the police and fire side of the shop here. I've finally been able to finalize the BMS lease with Town Council, and I did receive it back late Friday. I'm hoping to be able to get that over to the schools this week. So we are very close on that. There was a couple of last minute ads that delayed it, one of which was talking about gym use, which we wanted to see if we could work into the agreement. That was one of the emails we had received. So I'm working with council to finalize some language regarding that, to see if the school would be amenable. And.
Can I just ask, when does it come to the board?
So it would come to the board typically once we go back and forth a bit with the schools, and we, we reach a tentative agreement, then it would come to the board for review. If you'd like to see it before then, happy to send it out as well.
Sure.
Okay, you got it?
Yeah, just in case for some reason we had a problem with it, I'd hate to, at the final bell, decide there's some language we don't like.
Sure, it's a bit more complicated than I initially thought, and that's why it's taking a little bit of time.
Oh, yeah.
But I'm glad, you know, you guys have really put that on my radar, and I'm glad I've taken the time because it's an important thing that needs to get done. So I've issued the notice to proceed for the public safety radio antenna equipment installation project. So we are waiting for a scheduled date for that installation. And obviously Highland Bridge has been an issue that we have been discussing, and that's basically what I have for you this evening.
Okay, thank you. You did mention, you didn't mention tonight, but we know, we all know because of, I believe it was an email, that there's no electricity at the Brown Barn.
Correct.
So that's good to know.
And Rudolph has moved. I meant to bring up Rudolph.
Oh, that's right, yes.
So Rudolph has been relocated to the General Store. I know that there had been some discussion about doing that, and it was going to come back here, but then there was a little bit of a miscommunication, so it ended up accidentally just being moved. People seem happy with it, so hopefully we're okay there.
Well, I'll only have to take a ride to the center of town.
And its location has moved, or its ownership has moved?
Location.
Just, you know, we own too many things as a town, sometimes.
I will confirm on the ownership.
It's less than $10,000, I don't think, or whatever the threshold is, whatever the threshold is, you have to come back to the Select Board before disposing of town resources. I'm sure Rudolph is below that number, so.
We donated, maybe donated.
Let, let me work on that, make sure.
I don't need to hear names of departments, but of the town departments, how many budgets of all the budgets do we have? Do you have all the budgets came in? I'd be floored if all the budgets were already in, but like, half, three quarters, 1%?
Maybe half.
Okay.
A little over half. Oh, we had going back and forth, so.
Yeah, so some are going back and forth, half are already in. Have the schools submitted a budget to us?
No, but they come before us, the FinCom on December 13th, so they come with everything that evening.
Okay.
According to the letters, didn't sound like they were going to come before us with everything, though, right?
They may not come before us with everything because some of their revenue projections don't come out until January, and they are correct. Typically at the MMA Annual Conference, the governor will release their numbers, and so there are some things we had asked for in advance that we, they really cannot give us at this time. They can, you know, they can give us estimates, but they would feel more comfortable waiting.
Right, it's funny how ACBIT is able to do that, though.
Right.
Correct.
ACBIT has a bunch of towns that, some of which are way earlier town meetings than we do, so that.
Yeah.
ACBIT's formula, I mean, the revenue side obviously is, is one thing. I mean, because it's formula based on the expenditure side, I think it makes their budget a little bit simpler to, to estimate, but I would appreciate certainly as much information as we can receive from BBRSD.
I know, seeing as how it is the largest budget that we have to deal with.
Correct.
The OPEB actuary reports and budget stuff, the sooner I could get that before the meeting, because I expect it's a long meeting, if I've had a chance to digest all of that before the meeting, it might make.
Send it to the board now.
Make some ahead of time.
I think we got it from Paul.
Oh, you did because of the IAC, I think, but I will.
I'll look again, maybe I did.
Maybe, maybe Scott and Peg did not.
Under sort of a general of emails that have come in over the last couple of weeks, there might be, we had a request about flying flags.
We did.
And does the town currently have a policy about flying flags?
Town does not.
But our practice has always been only flying flags. I, do we have, well, we must have a flagpole somewhere, I just assumed we did, but we've really only flown like, you know, US, Massachusetts flag. We don't fly any flags.
Yes, so there are a couple of flags in town. There's one at the highway barn, there's one at the common, there's one here. I did confirm with both Fred and Chief Shartner that the only, only flags other than a traditional American flag that have ever been flown are honoring a military veteran overseas. And that is, I don't know exactly what that flag looks like, but it is still relative to government military flag. to government military flag. I did actually reach out to town council. There was a request. It went to a number of municipalities in the state. They actually referenced a case in Boston where they requested to fly a political flag. They were denied, and it was overturned by the Supreme Court. That is because the city of Boston has allowed individual groups to fly flags, pride flags, different other flags at that time. So because we have not allowed groups to fly flags, there was no reason to create a policy at this time, or actually to specifically respond, because in her, in the town council's estimation, you know, there really isn't a direction in that email of
Right.
to anyone with specific authority over the, the flagpole. So it's just basically our policy that we don't fly anything but an American or government-related flag.
Right. And it was even, I emailed you, too.
You did, yeah.
It's like, if the email had come from a town resident asking about it, I would have gone to greater lengths. But a blast email that goes to a bunch of towns, it didn't, didn't feel...
Oh, and not my SCM listserv that went around.
Right, right. Well, and it, it goes under, my belief that, you know, we can't have nice things, is that you can't fly other flags because there probably are some flags that are more universally accepted and not as political, not a politically charged topic, you know, like, you know, POW-related flags, all things like that, that, you know, the, the Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts on their special months, or breast cancer awareness. But, but when you start getting into, when you start going down that slope, is where's that line? And so it's just easier to have that line, government flags, and I think that will be fine.
It very much dovetails with the discussion we had at our last meeting.
Yep. We, we might also then figure out what the policy is about any town departments celebrating any sort of specific cause in any specific months. Because we do have some departments, I believe, do have some, I think, generally universally acceptable awareness months, like, you know, breast cancer awareness, and that where that policy is, that it is, you know, when is that acceptable, when is that is not. Before that becomes a problem and someone says, why aren't you doing, pick a radical, not universally acceptable political cause month.
Sure. I mean, it's celebrated internally, not externally.
Right.
So, but I, I see what you're saying from an HR perspective.
Yep.
So, yeah, that was an interesting one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Keep us on our toes all the time.
Uh, there's been some emails about, um, election equipment?
Yes. So there is a possibility we may be able to seek some funding from our state representatives for election equipment for ballot counting. So that doesn't have to be done by hand until 4 o'clock in the morning.
Yep.
There are two different types of software that will be reviewed in the upcoming weeks by the town clerk, myself, and a couple of her registers.
Right. And officially, the decision on whether or not we change the way we potentially vote in town is not a Select Board decision, correct?
It would actually be a town meeting decision, especially because it would require an amount of free cash to fund the purchase. So that would go to town meeting as an article.
Okay.
Are you talking about the financial aspect?
No, I'm talking about the other side. That, that brown box that we've been using for 100-plus years is a cultural touchdown. And I, I totally get that counting 2,000 ballots with a dozen ballot questions on it, and 12 races, one of which might be a school board race, would keep people up forever and have so many errors in it that I wouldn't want to have a close race where you'd have to do recounts. And so I totally get the need for, and as a technology person myself, the total need to go to something electronic.
Right.
And so trying to make sure that we, you know, build the right sort of, if that's the direction you want to go, that we build the right support for that to happen.
Absolutely. Eloise is very sensitive to it.
Right.
I think what it really came down to is there is a difficulty in recruiting volunteers.
Well, and as you point out, the last time took the win.
And they are often elderly.
Right. And how late did it go last time?
4:00 AM.
Right.
Was it really?
Yes.
Wow.
And, and if you think the number of people in town are increasing, and the potential of the ballot gets more commonly, because there was, was a school board on that one?
No.
No.
No, there was not a school board on that one. So the next one will even have a school board one, which makes it even a slightly different ballot thing. It just, it's become untenable to, to do it sort of manually. And sadly, that's what that box is. I, I have heard someone who's connected to this process talk about that maybe, you know, we have the, the brown box sort of outside the place, so you can have your picture taken with it nice and neatly, saying, you know, I voted, you know, you pretend to be putting a piece of paper in there at the time, but so that we still have and have a nice reverence for that box.
That's true.
And still allow people to not be here until 4:00 in the morning and trying to count all the different things you have to count on those, on the upcoming ballots.
Well, because the other issue is the people who were here till 4:00 in the morning don't want to do it again.
Right.
Which I don't blame them for. So then there is no one to count the ballots.
Right. We had a hard time recruiting those people, and those people were burnt out, and the odds we'd get them to do it again is slim.
Correct. Because the reason they were here till 4:00 was because there were so few of them.
Right, right, right.
So...
Anything else, Scott?
What, do I have other controversial things to bring up?
No, no, no. I'm just asking.
Um, no, because we hit some, several of the others, then.
Maybe, maybe we're just in touch too much so that I never have any questions.
Happy to assist.
No, or just, I had a little bit of extra time over the weekend, so I went back through my emails and going, oh yeah, what happened to this topic? Let's make sure this topic we, we haven't sort of dropped out.
That's right.
And you do have, there's a document somewhere we've already started about things remember for May town meeting.
Oh, yes. It's been going since last year. Or since last May, rather.
Right, right, right. Since last May, right. Because we talked about a fall town meeting, which never happened, and so it's just building off of that.
Correct.
Right.
Um, no, I have a couple more, but they'll wait till the 18th, because I, I think the meeting on the 11th, I will be bleary-eyed by the time we get to the end of the meeting.
All right. Then we're going to move on to old business and discuss the ARPA projects.
Right. And as you mentioned, there were two kind of follow-up items with regards to ARPA. The first was the Brown Barn and whether it had electricity, and we need to get a quote as part of the demo quote to take down the electricity. That has been removed. Fred has confirmed that that has, the electricity has been taken down. The other was the outstanding $1,500 for rec programming. They are very excited to use it this upcoming summer, so they would like to keep that. And actually, there's a third. The third is the playground. They are applying, or have applied for some CPA funding to fully do the playground, the, not just the pieces of equipment, but to actually fully pave, make it ADA accessible, et cetera, which I think is a far better, more comprehensive approach. It's costly, but I think you should do it right, not do it piecemeal. So that's all I have for you on ARPA.
Okay.
You don't need a vote from us to proceed, since we like to...
No, as, as long as you're comfortable, I would like to, as long as you're okay, I'd like to, I have to still put an RFR out, just like I did for the flooring bid for the barn. And it may be something that needs to wait until the spring weather, you know, permitting. But the basic, the plan is to actually demo the barn, remove any hazardous materials, haul away the waste, and return it to Lowman Seed, the way that it was, you know, previously, to the, prior to the barn being there.
Or put up a parking lot?
Or, or, or put up a parking lot, as, you know, we say.
As a slogan says, yes.
Yes.
Correct. Expand the parking lot, which the parking lot piece, I do have some actual pricing on as well. I think I had mentioned, we're, we're running around $60,000 to $70,000 on the parking. And we're looking at under 30 for the barn demo. And we have 50 in ARPA, and I requested 50 from Capital on behalf of the Select Board. So we should hopefully have enough to complete that full project. And the parking piece of it as well, I can get a little more information, get that together. But the barn was sort of a low-hanging fruit side of it to get that done first.
Yep.
Okay. Moving on to new business, we have CBA appointments, Patricia Jackson to the unexpired term of Susanna Roberts as associate board member and, of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the appointment of Susanna Roberts to the unexpired, unexpired term of Patricia Jackson as a regular board member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yes. So more simply, we're doing a switcheroo
Yes.
between an associate and a regular member of the ZBA.
Exactly.
Uh, I would move to approve the switcheroo.
Thank you.
Say, so moved.
It's a very technical term, switcheroo.
Uh, yeah, well...
Dee is going to make it look way better than that in the debate.
A swit, how about just a switch? There you go.
All right. And I will second that motion. So we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Board questions on the agenda, or liaison updates?
The only thing I would try to suggest is that the meeting on the 11th looks quite full.
Yes.
And when you review things, is are there things that can move to the 18th? Because I think all of us, when we get to the 9:30 to 10 o'clock range, just are not always at our best.
Even 9 o'clock, Scott.
Yeah. Or not always at our best. And so I don't, I don't know all the things that are looked at the agenda, but if some of those
It's not time-sensitive, maybe?
And we might find a way on some of those that we can
Right.
you know, go, figure out a way to organize faster, or...
Yeah. I, I mean, and is it, as important as OPEB is, I'm almost tempted to give it its own spotlight on the 18th. It's only one week out.
Yep.
If that's amenable to you.
That's what I was thinking, that if, if they can meet on the 18th, because that gives us, and it could be that on the 11th, you know, if we've looked at the OPEB, if we had a couple of brief questions, we can give them to you to get to, to the presenters so that they are also well-prepared by the time the meeting happens.
And I just sent those reports out to you all. So that would actually give you two weeks
Good, good.
to review them, which is probably even, even better, as you said. So then that would, yeah, leave quite a number of items still. On the 11th, I'll just quickly tell you, we have the honoring of the house explosion rescuers, the swearing-in of Jack's Police Department update, economic development discussion, and the continued public hearing for the River Bridge Liquors. Also, we have a potential land donation request, 13 acres